The case then, we're very honored to have this distinguished panel in front of us this evening. Welcome to the November 19th special council meeting. May we start off with a convene the meeting and a roll call, please?
Councilmember Reddick? Councilmember Penrose? Councilmember Rarback?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Mayor Eisen?
Yeah.
You have a coin?
Excellent. Well, we are here for discussion items, discussion with the county of San Mateo on the acquisition of the Coastside Inn and Quality Inn for housing people experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness and impacted by COVID-19. And we've got, I don't know, Bob, are you going to spend some time introducing everybody on our panel?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, I'll make an introduction as soon as you're ready for me to do so.
I am passing it off to you at this point. I think some of these people deserve some introduction. We've got some great people for this evening, so I'll let you take it away.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I introduce the folks from the county that have graciously agreed to give us their time and come talk about this proposal, this opportunity, I'll briefly introduce the proposal or what I know about it. It is something that came up sudden, so I only know so much, but that is why we invited the county to come, so they could present it to us, to you, the council, to staff, and to the community. But this just started for me less than a week ago, I think it was Friday. The county executive officer, who I'll introduce in a second, Mike Caligle, called me up and said there was an opportunity for the county to purchase one or two hotels within the city of Half Moon Bay. And this was an opportunity that was afforded to them through, I guess, federal and state funding sources. They'll get into that in a second when we get into their presentation. And these are sources specifically tied to COVID and the response to the pandemic. And so we talked about that and we've been really, as staff, evaluating it and introducing it to your council kind of informally. And then also, the county had to public notice, do a public notice for this proposed acquisition on Tuesday. So we coincidentally had our regular council meeting that night and were able to also announce it to the public, because by that time, we thought at the speed this is moving, the best way to have a community conversation about this is to have a special meeting and not wait. It's moving very fast, and so a decision was made, let's have a special meeting two days after our regular meeting, so we can really look at what's being offered here. It's a big proposal, and without a crisis in government, things just don't usually go this fast and work this way. So we thought it was important. But I think there is an incredible opportunity potentially on the table here. I was quite amazed when I got the email from Mike about what is being proposed here. And it's really interesting, because I think it shows their commitment and really their values, the county's values, a shared value of this county and this community on two levels. One, on our vulnerable populations and our homeless populations, which is one of the, I think, biggest challenges in the state of California at this time, pre-pandemic. And the county has a role and an obligation to provide services to homeless individuals and do their best to find housing and make housing opportunities available to homeless populations, so they can become a productive part of our society. That's a value they have, and that's a value our community has and shares with them. And then a second value and commitment to doing their best in their role as the public health agency to combat this pandemic and do everything in their power to protect lives and save lives. And so those values, the opportunity here is where those values have intersected. And the opportunity is afforded to the county to both address homeless populations, some of our most vulnerable populations, and also do their job in partnership with us to address this pandemic and save lives. And so I think that where those two intersect and those opportunities on two very challenging problems that we face this year is what's amazing about this opportunity. So I think we really owe it to listen and think about how that works for our community in trying to work on homelessness and this pandemic. So that's my introduction. I, at this point, will introduce our guests. Of course, our county supervisor is here, Don Horstley. He has been a part of this from the beginning, I understand, and always remembers Half Moon Bay when he goes about doing his job. The county executive officer, Mike Caligle, is here. I have not met Ken Cole, County Human Services Agency, hope I got that right. Meeting for the first time is also here, and I see Chris Hunter. Don's chief of staff is here. Did I miss anyone? So again, on short notice, we propose that this is how we'd like to do it in Half Moon Bay, have a community meeting, so that the county could present this to everyone at the same time and answer questions by the council and take public comment. I see the word has clearly got out, as we intended it to. There's 31 people in the audience. So with that introduction, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it back to you, and then you can go. And, excuse me, before we do that, I think it is appropriate, our city attorney wanted to make some comments about how the procedure goes, because there is a point in the conversation where if there's detailed discussion or deliberation about specific hotels, she has some comments about that. So, Ms. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to cover this topic of complex of interest. This has all been moving quite quickly, but we did observe that the two hotel sites, one is within 500 feet of one council member and another is within 500 feet of another council member. So, given that we haven't had a chance to seek an advice opinion from the FPPC, I have recommended that we follow a segmentation procedure. If the council wants to discuss the specific sites, I would recommend that we do so, take them up individually. Councilwoman Rarback is within 500 feet of the Coastside Hotel and Councilmember Vice Mayor Brownstone is within 500 feet of the Quality Inn. So I'll queue up this again when we get to council deliberation. But otherwise, we can proceed as we typically do with the county presentation. The council members may ask clarifying questions after the presentation, which wouldn't include deliberation or discussion, but clarifying questions. We'll take public comment as usual, and then when it comes back to the council for discussion and deliberation, at that point, the council can feel free to, as a group, discuss the program in general. But if you wish to discuss the specific hotel sites, I recommend that you do those one by one, so that the two councillors will each have an opportunity to recuse, which in the Zoom world means turning off your camera and muting yourself. So if there are any, unless there are any questions about the procedure, we're familiar with it, because this is actually what we did for the coastal land use plan. If there are no questions, I would turn it over to the county for the presentation.
Perfect, and thank you, Catherine. And I just want to, yeah, feel free to jump in. I can see how it can easily get muddled as we go through it. And so hopefully, we can segment it out as we go through the talking points. All right, we'll turn it over to the county. Thank you so much for coming this evening.
Thanks, maybe I'll start off as opposed, and I'll, our county exec, as well as maybe our district. Sort of back me up in terms of the fact, now, I just, just kind of historical. You know, I know that everything on the coast side is really controversial, so I know that this is going to be really a controversial proposal, but it really is also an opportunity, and, you know, in a sense, that one of the things that has happened because of, I think the governor came up with a great idea. I mean, he recognized that California has a huge problem with homeless people, and he also has a huge problem with this COVID-19. So he came up with the idea of the Home Key Program. And so what we have done is, we really have taken advantage of it. In Redwood City, we have purchased recently two hotels. As you know, as you can imagine, they were controversial, because again, the communities felt like, gee, this is really, how come we haven't been consulted? How come there's so much, such a short timeframe? And it's because of the fact that we have to do this before the end of the year. We just didn't, it wasn't really possible for us to take months of time and involve the communities. So in any case, because, you know, because of the fact that in the coast side, we, I also know, I see, I think Matthew, hopefully Matthew Chedister is on this as well. I can recall sometime back when we had, well, this town had a very large problem with homeless people behind the Safeway. And we conducted a big project with the city, mostly this, really the city that actually did most of the heavy lifting. We brought in a lot of our community partners, our CBO organizations, and it took us about, well, I should say the city, probably about three to four months to work on removing something in the neighborhood of about 40 people living in that creek behind the Safeway. And at the time, what we thought is that we could get all those people over onto the base site, basically into Redwood City area, where we have a fairly large homeless facility, which I have to, I'm proud to say that I have expanded, just for those, that population. Well, most of those people didn't want to go, and I know the city council people told me the same thing. The people who are homeless on the coast side don't want to go to Redwood City. They want to stay on the coast. In any case, we did, you know, the city was really successful at getting the people out of those creek. And, but I just think all they did was change their location. They went to another part of the creek. So this is really kind of, it's really an opportunity to kind of deal with that problem on a once-for-all basis. The county, and I think the city probably shares with me, the goal of having zero homelessness. And so purchasing these two hotels gives us the opportunity to have zero homelessness on the coast side. You know, currently, we have people living in creeks. We have people in RVs on our streets. You know, in fact, you know, I was, you know, the other day, and I know there's a guy that sits in front of your, right where it goes to Main Street and the exit from the Safeway parking lot. He sits there all day, panhandling. So there's a long-term problem of homelessness on the coast side. So these two hotels, if we're able to purchase them, really gives us an opportunity to deal with that problem. It doesn't mean that what we're going to do is buy the hotels and that people are going to be able to live there forevermore. That's not the purpose of it. The purpose is, is to make sure that we have wraparound services, that we can get them back on their feet and back into a stable life, you know, eventually. Because we're not going to, we're not going to buy these hotels to make it so that they could live there on a permanent basis. We also want to make sure that the people who we provide services for really are people who have already there on the coast side. We don't want to have, we're not trying to solve somebody else's problem. We're trying to solve our own problem. But it's not only homelessness that we need to be able to deal with. It's, you know, for example, that, you know, all of our hospitals, whether it's Sequoia or Mills Peninsula, they have needs for respite care. So we have the potential, these facilities give us the opportunity for respite care. We also have seniors who are really low income, that we have an opportunity to be able to take care of those people at the same time. So it really gives us a great opportunity, really, to address a lot of the problems that plague the whole county. And give you a last statistic, the coast side has 7% of the county population, and you've got 11% of the homeless. 11% of the homeless for the county, and only 7% of the population. At one time, there was a community group that was trying to find a site for homeless facilities. In fact, I remember the restaurant that is now, that was, that's now the Pasta Mode, was a group that proposed buying that as a homeless facility. I didn't think it was a very good idea, because it's on Main Street. Centralla was a, you know, was a restaurant, and, you know, to convert a multimillion dollar property into a homeless facility on Main Street, just wasn't going to work out. But this is really an opportunity for us and for the whole coast side to deal with a problem that's really plagued us. And, you know, a lot of residents may feel like, well, I don't see the homeless. Well, they're here, they're there. Like I said, it's 11% of the county's homeless live on the coast side. So it's really an opportunity to solve a problem. It is part of our vision to solve the homelessness 100% on the San Mateo County. We've got sites in, that we, in South San Francisco, in San Mateo, Redwood City, and now this is the first one we've been able to find on the coast side. I know it's controversial, but at the same time, I will say that we're going to make sure that there'll be wraparound services, that it's not going to spill off into your neighborhoods, and we will deal with the problems, whatever problems that crop up, we will deal with them. We will provide support. So with that, if you have any questions, I think, you know, Mike is here, as well as our human services director is here as well to answer, and Ken Cole was an expert at dealing with homeless populations in his previous positions in Santa Cruz.
Councilwoman Penrose? Yes, you mentioned that it was, the facilities would be used for our homeless. What do you mean by that? Are there going to be 100% for residents of Half Moon Bay? For the coast side, for the county?
If I may address that, Councilmember, yeah, this is Mike Caligle. They will, you know, primarily, we want to address homelessness on the coast side with these hotels. It could be, like the supervisor said, also for respite care. The fact of the matter is that we have to get, we have got to get these folks who are homeless off the street during this pandemic. Around the county, we have approximately 200 in hotel rooms right now. And that expense of keeping them in those hotel rooms is just not sustainable. That's why we believe that the longer-term strategy is to buy these hotels, house folks, get them off the streets during this pandemic, but then work with them to try to get them placed in homes. We, you know, the, this program that we're looking at, and this is not part of Home Key, but it is part of CARES, and that's why the supervisor said we had to use this funding by the end of the year, or we lose it. We have this availability of these funds, and it's a rare opportunity to do that, and that's why we're moving so fast. But it really provides an opportunity. In this county, the board of supervisors has charged me with trying to get to functional zero. And that means that we have a place for everyone in this county who wants a roof over their head, whether it's congregant care in the homeless shelters, and we have one in South San Francisco, Safe Harbor, and Redwood City, and East Palo Alto, with We Hope, or whether it's a motel room, or whether it's one of the connect buildings that we're going to buy and put down on Maple Street. We believe that we can get there, but we believe that's absolutely key and necessary to find some locations along the coast to house the homeless, especially during this pandemic. And the philosophy that we have, and we've always employed, is housing first. So we can't deal with drug and alcohol addiction, or mental health, or lack of job opportunities, or education for kids and families until we house them. Once you house them, you stand such a better chance of dealing with the issues that have plagued these individuals for a period of time. Now, some of these individuals have literally outlived their life savings and become homeless overnight as they grow older and outlive that savings and just can't keep up with the rent in this county on a fixed income. And they find themselves homeless, and these are people who have lived in this county their entire life or have raised families and worked in this county, and now they find themselves homeless during the most difficult time, when they are most exposed with, you know, with some of the illnesses that they may have, making them extremely vulnerable. So that's why we think that this is such a key, but they will include wraparound services, and we've become quite experienced at this over time, in that we've taken over entire hotels in Burlingame. We have a hotel right now in Burlingame where we have 80 rooms. And we have a provider there, Samaritan House, who does a great job of feeding these individuals and providing the services necessary. But it's not sustainable to keep renting these rooms, and it's not sustainable to bring people over the hill to this side of the bay. It's probably not fair to bring them over to this side of the bay. So that's why we feel that, you know, here's a rare opportunity to get 100 rooms that we can provide service. And a lot of these people are in the community. They may be out of sight, but they still have all the issues that need to be dealt with, and we know that by bringing them inside, we can deal with a lot of those issues. And I just also want to say, before I turn it back over, is that there are rules and regulations in these hotels. And if you don't abide by them, you are evicted from a shelter, like anywhere else. It's not a free-for-all. It's not unsupervised. These folks, you know, are not be able to bring people into their rooms and have parties and that type of thing. This is a very strictly-run shelter, like all our shelters are.
Yeah. I guess I am definitely in favor of the idea of homeless being housed in what we might call transitional housing, to get them back on their feet, back to be useful members of society. No question. My question was, the coast side hotels, will they, will coast side residents, homeless residents, have priority?
Well, I guess.
Will they be restricted to coast side residents? What will the mechanics of that be?
Well, the goal really is to have a priority for coast side residents, in, you know, in a way that, you know, resident, you know, if somebody's living in a creek in the coast side, that's our priority. Get them out of that creek and get them stabilized. You know, it used to, one of the things that Mike has said about, you know, you can't really deal with the underlying issues that people have, whether it's drug addiction or mental health, until you have housing. So it's, yeah, it's, the purpose is to get the people who live or on the coast someplace, whether they're in a creek or on the street, or, get them, they're that priority.
Oh, if I could, if I could speak to that, to the question at hand about, so I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Ken Cole. I'm the agency director for the Human Services Agency of the county. I know, I want to thank the mayor and your city manager for this opportunity to attend this discussion. So on the, on the point of the who would be housed, I want to be clear that in the shelter system across the county, up to this moment in time, we have not had a geographic component to selecting which shelter someone goes to. So for example, in your churches or your social programs here in Half Moon Bay or on the coast, if you had someone who needed a shelter bed, they would have gone to a shelter on the other side of the county, because that's where the shelters were. If we can get this resource and create the program we'd like to see here, we could give a priority, for the first time, a geographic priority, to serve first the people experiencing homelessness from this area. in the creeks, as the supervisor mentions, it gets a little shaky as to how you, how you nail that down. But we would look for people who had, um, a history with the, the coast side. And right now, uh, as, as the, um, county manager mentioned, we have about a hundred and eighty individuals in hotel programs in other parts of the county. They were selected because they were vulnerable to COVID. So that, it's not because they have COVID. They're, they're older or they have an underlying condition and it's a health intervention to help them give a place to shelter in place. And, um, and many of them have come from the coast side. I don't have an exact number, but I can tell you that, um, Coastside Hope, Pacifica Resource Center, Live Moves and our hot team made the referrals into the existing hotel rooms that we're managing right now. So there are certainly, um, homeless individuals who are vulnerable, who are already in that system. And then this, uh, new acquisition, if we're able to do it, uh, would give us in a, a much greater capacity to serve the coastal area first and assist these individuals. And again, the goal, as the, our county manager said, is to get them into permanent housing, to deal with the problems they have. It's not to leave them in a hotel room. It's to engage with them and wrap around the services that gets them, uh, to a better place. So I, I just, um, say that I, I know you all as elected officials, I bet you dimes to donuts, you've been asked hundreds of times, what are you doing to help the homeless? What are, or what are you doing about the homeless? So I know that this is an issue that you deal with all the time. And as I believe your city manager said at intro, um, this is a unique situation. We're in a pandemic, we're in a health crisis. And with every crisis, there are new opportunities. I know this can be a shock to a neighborhood. And I can tell you, I've managed, um, programs for the homeless most of my career. And the nonprofits involved in this kind of work will engage with the neighbors, will engage with the community and be very serious to limit any impact on the neighborhood. And again, I, I'm happy to help with other questions, thank you. Councilwoman Ruddock?
So what entity will actually manage the facility on a day-to-day basis? Will it be Life Moves?
The, uh, excellent question. We have a request for qualifications or, you know, light RFP out to our nonprofit partners at this moment, because have the facility in, in Redwood City, uh, which will be used in the same way. So we are looking, um, for partners right now, they have not been selected. And, uh, if we go forward with this acquisition, we could certainly look to involve, your community in that selection process.
Yeah, I would say that we would want to do that at a minimum. I, I think I'm familiar with the county's existing, uh, facilities for homeless transitional housing. And for the most part, they seem to be really well managed. I want to make sure that if we go this route, that, um, that the same sort of management approach, um, experienced, applies here as well. I mean, I, I, I have been impressed, I have seen and visited the facilities over the hill. We would want the same thing here. Yeah, I, I think that's really key to getting, you know, community buy-in.
Yeah. We certainly share that, that desire. And we'll closely, uh, manage the contractors in this regard.
And Councilmember, if I may, I'll, I'll certainly make the same commitment, uh, to you all that I've made to, uh, Redwood Shores. And that is that, uh, when we do put that RF, uh, queue out for a, a vendor, we would send it to you all first to make sure that, uh, we have hit the mark on what we're looking for in that, uh, for that particular region. And then, uh, before we select that vendor, you will have an opportunity to, uh, interview them and question them. Well, after we select them, before we sign them to a contract, you have an opportunity to question them and, and really understand what their plan is. And then, uh, for the first year, we have quarterly updated meetings with, uh, with you all to determine if we are meeting our mark and making sure that, uh, we are good neighbors and, and, uh, and have lived up to everything that we've said. And then thereafter annually or semi-annually.
The product, you know, works for us, but to build support constituencies for these services, you know, going forward. So thank you for that. The next question I have would be just, I, I want to understand the, um, the financial impact on the city. Because this would replace TOT revenue generating, um, economic functions. And that's not to say, I wouldn't base my decision solely on that, but I want to understand the fiscal impacts and see if there's a way to mitigate those. So if there's an opportunity to do that, I, I think that also increases, you know, community support.
And, and, uh, that is something that, uh, I've spoken to, uh, city manager Nesbit about, and though we haven't been specific, you know, I did indicate, the board gave me direction, I would certainly, um, negotiate with Half Moon Bay to smooth out the TOT over a couple of years or so, um, to ensure, uh, it's not a, a hard stop of, you know, impacting this budget or next year's budget, or even the budget after that. That there is some continuation. There is some thought that, uh, you know, uh, other hotels, and I, and I'm afraid to say, I don't know, remember how many you have, um, would be able to absorb, uh, this, uh, you know, decline from these, uh, particular hotels. But, uh, we would work on that and, and try to reach a, a fair agreement that works for, for all of us.
Great, thank you, that's all the questions I have at the moment.
Councilmember Rhabak, do you have any question, clarifying questions before we move on to Vice Mayor Brownstone?
No questions, I'll have a comment or two later, as we've already heard a few, but in general, I'm thrilled.
Okay.
Thanks.
Vice Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I just have some, a couple of clarifying questions. So, and also for members of the public, as we're throwing some terms around that could be interpreted different ways. So when we say coast side right now, serving the coast side, we're talking about everything from Pacifica down to Pescadero, is that right?
Right, that's, that's who we're talking about.
Yeah, totally true, yes.
Okay. And when you say, um, so we have seven percent of the population, you're talking about that definition of coast side and we, and we have eleven percent of the homeless. Can you, if you're being that specific, then what does eleven percent equal in terms of the number of homeless?
Well, I can speak to, uh, the likely statistics that, um, the supervisor was using, uh, came from our point in time count, which was last done in 2019. And by the way, since we have an audience, we'll be doing a new point in time count uh, in January, and we'll be looking for volunteers to assist us in the, in, as we attempt to count homelessness in a pandemic. The, the numbers that we have from the 2019 point in time count had a total of two hundred and thirty, uh, individuals who were counted, uh, to be unsheltered on, on the coast side. And the quick numbers I have was, uh, in that count was fifty-four in Half Moon Bay, sixty in, uh, coast side unincorporated and a hundred and sixteen in Pacifica. And again, these numbers, uh, have certainly changed since 2019 and we will be doing the count again in January twenty twenty-one.
And
If I might, I think the, uh, mo- most of the homeless at Pacifica were
Be hooked killer, yes.
Most of the unsheltered people really are in the unincorporated and half the bay. And there are very few people in, in the south coast and Pescaderos and simply there, there's no place to panhandle basically.
Remotely.
Most of the folks at Pacifica were like in cars, RVs?
Yeah.
Yes, mostly in cars and RVs.
Okay. That's helpful, um.
And by the way, we are looking at, at Pacifica, we are looking at potentially purchasing a portion of a, uh, RV park for the, the safe parking area.
Got it.
But it's, whether we can pull that off or not, I, I don't know, but we are looking at that.
Also, just for, um, group understanding of terms, I know, uh, the term congregate facility comes up and non-congregate, would you just mind differentiating those two?
I'd be happy to. So in, in terms of, of emergency shelter, congregate housing, uh, shelters typically are, uh, dormitory style with shared spaces, shared bathrooms and whatnot. And that's congregate. That would also, you know, for example, a nursing home would be considered congregate housing. So that's the congregate term. And then non-congregate would be having individual rooms, including a, a bathroom separate from others. So this is one of the reasons in the early part of the pandemic, we moved very quickly as a county to decrease the number of people in our congregate shelters to allow for social distancing. And then move the vulnerable homeless out of the congregate, uh, shelters into the hotel rooms in that first wave of our response, uh, in order to decrease the chance for transmission in the shelters and provide, um, non-congregate shelter for the, the vulnerable population.
Got it, great. And then the question, um, it'd be great to have just a little more detail about what we mean when we use the term wraparound services. So that could mean, I mean, when I think of all the services that could be provided, what do you have in your mind, everything from security, medical care, food, et cetera?
Yes, excellent question. And, and we all, you know, in, in any, uh, discipline, we tend to use jargon and a very common jog, jargon is wraparound services. So for, eh, for people experiencing homelessness, we, uh, you, you need to, um, get them off the street and then you need to assess, uh, do an assessment of what, what created their homelessness or what are the issues that are underpinning their homelessness? So those wraparound services are a response to that assessment. So each individual is going to have a different set of needs. Certainly some common needs, like food. But, uh, individuals will vary in other needs. There'll be people who need, uh, healthcare, immediate healthcare assistance, there'll be people with, um, with emotional distress that needs to be dealt with. It can be someone with a substance abuse problem, certainly. So, uh, the wraparound services come from that assessment. So we would have a case management assessment on each individual and a service plan for each individual. And the service plans would vary. I don't want to underestimate or describe those services in the sense that it is, it is a heavy lift to line up the services that people need, particularly people coming off the street who have been out there a long time. They typically need a, a, an extensive list of support services initially, uh, to get them back on their feet. But I feel like our county health department, our, um, our, uh, human services agency, our network of nonprofits, uh, can, can meet those needs for the individuals we're discussing tonight.
And so do you envision bringing most of those services over to the hotels or transporting people over the hill to receive those services?
Yeah. Excellent question. Typically, uh, your, um, typically the assessment and basic support functions like, like food and, um, support groups and things can be done on-site. The more, uh, uh, the more, um, specific services like healthcare, mental health care, uh, may involve, um, leaving the site and going elsewhere for those services. So we, so the vent, the, um, nonprofit partner that we would be contracting with to operate the shelter, I, I, I prefer to use the term transitional, in this case, a transitional housing model. That, that nonprofit will be responsible primarily for the case management and assessment. And then they're making sure that the referral to other services, that there's a firm link to those other services. And if there is not a firm link, uh, they would need to call that to our attention to make sure we could get those services to that individual.
Right, so that link might include transportation.
Clinic, of course, you know, in Half Moon Bay, so.
Yes.
Medical and medical facilities are really pretty close to the, to two facilities. So we, they, they're really there on the coast side available for, um,
In terms of what's existing, I think there's probably some capacity issues that would have to be explored, you know? And also in terms of, um, you know, you mentioned there's rules, regulations, so each facility where they have onsite, um, you know, full-time, twenty-four-seven, I don't know what, what right word would, to use, purity, I don't mean people with, you know?
Yeah, I mean, typically, you, I mean, we would be looking at certainly twenty-four hour staffing. The staffing would vary by the shift. So, you know, typically in a day shift, in a transitional housing program, you have multiple staff to do the case management and the interaction with the residents of, or the participants. And in later shifts, swing or evening shift, then you're going more to a security function. And you have perhaps fewer staff on-site, but you have, um, nobody's sleeping in terms of the staff. You know, you'd have overnight staff, uh, for security purposes, um, through, through the twenty-four hour period.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have for now, appreciate it.
That. Councilwoman Penrose?
Yes, one more clarifying question. You mentioned, um, a mix of transitional housing and respite care. And I'm curious, uh, about what you mean by respite care? Are you talking about COVID, people who are recovering from COVID? And the second, uh, part of that question is, are you thinking of dividing the two populations into two separate hotels? Or are you thinking of transitional housing right next to respite care?
Yeah.
I can, I can answer a little bit of that. The rest, care, respite care really refers to a number of our hospitals, uh, Sequoia Hospital, Mills Peninsula, they oftentimes will have a patient who, um, really, you know, doesn't really require hospitalization any longer. Probably is, doesn't require a skilled nursing facility. It probably doesn't have anybody to take care of them and even be homeless. And so they need to be in some kind of a place where they are essentially have somebody available to watch, to make sure that, take care of, to help them with your daily needs. And so that, we call that respite care. And so, um, all of the hospitals, um, are looking for that kind of facility, whether it's a Sequoia Hospital or Mills Peninsula or Stanford Hospital, for somebody to be able to go somewhere where there's some attendance to be there to take care of them, make sure that they're okay. They don't have high medical needs, they don't need to be in a skilled, their nursing facility, but they do need to be someplace where there's staff available. And I think actually, one healthcare districts would like to, uh, will probably even compensate for pay for of that kind of respite care.
So the respite care may not necessarily be, uh, someone recovering from COVID. It could be somebody in hospital for another reason, but this
Probably not, in fact, probably not COVID, right?
Right. And then the second part of the question was, uh are you considering separating the two populations?
Yeah, so I can speak to any any uh council member of Penrose, uh any uh special subset of the housing that we're talking about would be uh, you know, we would, if we if we went that route, we would look for a small number of rooms in one location of the building or one of the two buildings for that that special activity or that special subset. Uh, I want to emphasize that uh we're not looking at COVID. This is not COVID housing at all. So all of our shelters are that we're talking about in the homeless arena are not COVID-positive forms of shelter. If someone was COVID positive, we would have them at another location, not at this location, and we'd have them in the health system.
But but just to be clear, we do have those other locations available for COVID individuals who can't um separate from their family members. So we do house them at uh different hotels. This would not, this not to be the place to do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, any other clarifying questions?
Okay, I have a few clarifying questions and and let me just say, one of the things I'm I'm concerned about, which I'm glad that was addressed earlier, is the transient occupancy tax dollars. As you all are aware, Half Moon Bay is one of the top ten uh city-reliant transient occupancy tax cities in the entire state of California. That means we rely on the transient occupancy tax to fund ourselves uh more than almost every other city in the state of of California. So losing any tax revenue dollars from uh transient occupancy tax would be a blow, considering we already had to take our our tax dollars down dramatically to to uh to affect this year. So I just want to, I know that's been addressed, but I just want to throw that out there. Do the rooms in the hotels get converted in any way? Or are are there kitchens involved? Or how are people eating and and going through that process? I I don't quite, I I'm just trying to unwrap my head around that piece.
Yeah, excellent question. Uh, the the hotel rooms that we're talking about are not equipped with kitchens to my, best of my understanding. And and we have, again, in the uh, we've got four hotels that we're currently using throughout the county for this um alternative housing during the pandemic for the homeless. Uh, and I think all of them are without kitchen facilities. So we have a food service contract uh that provides food to the residents or guests or participants, however you want to describe it. So we would be having a food service for the individuals in in the shelter.
And and what, does that arrive multiple times a day or it comes once or and then services or how how does that work?
Yeah, it's it's basically uh it's uh delivered uh with each, each meal is separately delivered, so it's not like one delivery. It would be three deliveries a day. And it's it's basically a boxed uh a boxed meal from a central kitchen. Now, out here on the coast, we could get creative about how do we, how do we contract out that food? You know, perhaps you have restaurateurs or a food service on this side um that we could make a make a a connection there.
Yeah, and that's that's exactly where I'm going with the second piece of that, is to support our local businesses in the ideal situation. Yeah. And I think we have restaurants that are in need of some help from that perspective. So uh, I want to go back and I didn't quite know if I understood this answer that well. I think it was Councilwoman uh Penrose, but that the residents of Half Moon Bay or the the homeless population of Half Moon Bay, again, it, I I don't understand, are they part of a queue? Or or are they part of a preference with this program? Uh do they just go in with everybody else? Or is it, you know, the people of Half Moon Bay would automatically get housing? And and then the second part of that is back to, I think, what Don Horstly talked about earlier, what if people don't want to move? Because I I we're not sure, you know, if we provide this service, if people are even going to want to move out of the locations they're currently at, how do, what what is the plan if that were to occur?
Right. Well, I think it it's always um, I I believe it's uh always important to 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 be precise in in these descriptions. And so the first thing I would say to that question again is if we had this resource available, we would first look to the existing uh individuals in ho- in hotels in other parts of the county who have that connection to the coast, who came from the coast side. So that would be sort of the first preference group into the new rooms here. The and I I don't know what that number would be to start with. Then you'd have the remainder of the rooms to uh resource to to uh fill. And that we would look to your um, to the local nonprofits, uh your your law enforcement, your city officials to look for people that we could um make um get onto a waitlist into those rooms with a preference again towards people on the coast side. Now, I I do want to say that we can't get to absolute a hundred percent. We can't get to absolute zero with homelessness. There are people that can take years and years and years to get off the street. So I have to be careful. You always have to manage expectations. This would be a huge resource on on the coast to to deal with homelessness. But there will be some individuals that will persist in sleeping um in other circumstances. But at least we'd have a resource to to engage with them and eventually lead them that to that resource at a later date. The other thing about homelessness, just quickly, is this is not a static group of people. Uh, this is a flow. People do not wake up and typically desire to be homeless. They fall into homelessness. It's usually something that takes years and years and years to get to. It may take years to get out of the of the of the um, the the real chronic homeless pattern. But it is a, it is a flow and people get well. People get off the street. People get back into housing and you won't see them on the street again. So it's not like uh, it's not a hopeless situation. And it's also not a static set number of people.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may add, you know, for those, and you're right, there's some uh that uh that Ken alluded to that are just not ready to come off the street for whatever reason. Uh but that's where our hot team and the street medicine team uh and the sheriff's office all work together to really uh, you know, continue to deliver services and and continue to urge them to uh to move into more stable housing so that we can help. I mean, it's really, it's so difficult, as as I started by saying, to provide any of these services in a realistic way unless we there, there's a roof over their head, unless they're stabilized with housing, then we can start dealing with the other issues that uh that maybe led to uh to uh
And and one of the great advantages in engage in the engagement process is to be able to show somewhere, show someone where they might be housed, to walk them over and show them the the location and the the place. Uh, in Santa Cruz, I I worked with a a gentleman who was homeless for, I think, fifteen years, living in the Santa Cruz Mountains, hiking in and out every day to a part-time job at the University of Santa Cruz, at UC Santa Cruz. He was a janitor there. He could never get on full-time. He could never quite get enough for housing. And his solution was camping deep in the mountains uh for safety. And eventually, once we found him and engaged with him, it took about five years to get him into transitional housing. Uh, and 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 it was a win, but it can, it can take time.
No, I'm aware. Okay, good. And then it and and it leads into what what is the, so I I see the short-term horizon. What is the long-term horizon of such a purchase? And wh- what's the the long-term plan? Is or or do do these hotels stay like this into perpetuity at this point? Or what what's the, can can I get like a a two-year, five-year, ten-year, thirty-year plan of what this looks like?
Uh, ideally, uh mayor, um, these these uh residents will will provide short-time housing, transitional housing, as we get people out of the system. We would love to be able at some point in time to turn these into affordable housing units to uh to move away from uh the more transient nature of it uh as as uh as we deal with homeless and find more and more homeless housing uh and turn this into a affordable housing, mixed, you know, affordable housing for all income levels. Now, when that is, I can't say exactly when that would be, but this is the first step in trying to get there.
No, that's an attractive, that's an attractive uh proposition. That's good, that's good. I like that perspective. Um, and uh, how many rooms are we talking about at the properties? Is one of them about like one-ten and the other one about seventy-five? What what are we talking about?
I think they're both around fifty-two, if I remember correctly, fifty-two rooms.
Fifty-two rooms?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, just so I understand, why now? What what happened that put us in this position all of a sudden now where we're rushing and trying to figure all this stuff out? And I realize we're close to the end of the year and I get that. Why why didn't we bring this forward three months ago?
Yeah. Well, uh, we uh, we have CARES funding that we're able to utilize on this project. Uh, and uh, we were looking at a variety of hotels around the county. Some have worked out, some have not. This opportunity presented itself. Unfortunately, the CARES funds have to be used by the end of the year. Uh, and uh, so that is what the rush is about. Uh, and the the last board meeting for the uh board this year is on December four eighth.
Okay.
Can I point out, uh, mayor, that uh for you, I've been trying to uh figure out some way to deal with homeless on the coast side. And what time we we funded a program uh with uh, I think it's called Heart and Soul or whatever, but the idea was we were trying to get a rotating shelter at all the different congregations from Pacifica always into Half Moon Bay. We couldn't. We weren't able to find anything or we weren't able to come up with any kind of a program because none of the, most of the congregations didn't really have the facilities. So then we did, we brought it over Dignity on Wheels, if you remember that. It's a, it's a, it's a big trailer that people can wash their clothes and take a shower, uh so they would feel a sense of dignity. And then I know I've worked with uh various members of the Half Moon Bay City Council, looking for potential sites for uh facility. And I know the community members have always said, gee, there's nothing on the coast side for homeless people. So this really was an opportunity finally to have a ready-made facilities, ready-made facilities for the homeless, deal with the problem that really is a intractable problem in all of our communities. I think it really is an opportunity for us to deal with something for um, you know, I think that it need, really needs to be done.
I hear you, I hear. And then from a law enforcement perspective, um, you, as as you guys all well know, uh, you know, we do not have a high number of police presence in Half Moon Bay at any given time. I'm just, I'm just curious. I don't know.
Well, you're indicating that are the homeless going to cause more crime? Well, they're already there. They're already, it's not as if this is anything new. We're not bringing people in. They're already there. Are they creating crime already? I I I don't think so. Uh, they're, yeah, they're probably panhandling, but in terms of, you know, crime in the neighborhoods, uh, it isn't happening. I I but I I, you know, to just I will say that we will make sure that that's, that there isn't any increase in crime. If we have to, we'll end up adding to the sheriff's department to make sure that 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 public safety is really maintained. But y- these are poor people. They're people who live in a creek. They're not, they're not bank robbers. They're not, they're not, they're not drug dealers for the most part, you know.
No, 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 I'm not insinuating that they are, but I but I am, I am telling you that uh there are going to be more people that are being brought in from other juris- jurisdictions into Half Moon Bay, into a concentrated area. And with our law enforcement uh being at a minimum, as as long as you're willing to make sure that we are suffi- we don't have the funds in our town to support more law enforcement, so if we were to need it, that's where we'd be able to come back to you guys and say, hey, you know, and that's, uh, you, these are things you have to vet out beforehand, because all these details get very sticky once you're in this situation.
Uh, I recognize that. I know our county manager recognized that. That's our responsibility. And so that's our pledge to you, that we will, we'll deal with, if there's a a law enforcement issue, we will deal with it.
All right, very good. Those are, those are my questions. I think we should open it up to the uh, to the, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
One question, if that's okay.
Please.
I know that's not normally uh the norm, but uh I think this is a good question. Uh, so it does go to the funds and it does go to the the threat of questions about locals versus um homeless populations from other areas. So can the, are the funds only eligible for capital acquisition? Or can they, are are they eligible to be used for the the ancillary costs of setting up and moving the homeless populations in? And I say that because it goes back to the conversation about the difficulty of getting homeless individuals uh uh out of homelessness. And and in our situation, we have encampments and we know where a lot of them are. Some are on private property. Some are on city property and some are on other government property like Caltrans. Each one is different. If they're on city property, we have a certain amount of control. If they're on private property, Caltrans property, there's work associated with uh getting those individuals to agree they would be better off, but then cleaning up the sites and getting those encampments uh restored out of the creeks. And I'm wondering if that back to wanting to deal with the homelessness that we know we have right here on the coast side now, um, is is that part of um the project to to get to 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 do, get, get those encampments cleaned up as we get them into the hotels?
Uh, well, a couple of things come to mind, uh Bob, just on the, on the funding side. We do have operating dollars uh available to us from both federal sources and state sources for the operation of the of the transitional or shelter program that we're describing. That, and we have dollars available through CARES Act uh uh for the capital purchase of the of the of the buildings or the hotels. Um, the the other kind of cleanup activities uh relating to, you know, rest restoring an area that has been damaged from years of campgrounds. I know that is an issue that the county would certainly uh participate in the planning to figure out how do we get that restored. Uh, I I'm not familiar um with with specific dollars in that in that regard, because that's not my expertise.
Thank you.
Well, Bob, I I I, you know, your point's well taken uh in a couple of ways. The the CARES dollars wouldn't be eligible for that type of cleanup, but we could certainly look for other funding for that. But it's really hard to to enforce, um, you know, the trespass, whether it's on uh public or private property, when you don't have someplace else to take them. Uh, and uh, you know, here there's an opportunity to say, look, we've got someplace else to take you. There is a viable, safer location to take you. And I think that certainly makes it more palpable and 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 probably more enforceable.
You know, Mike, I I appreciate you saying that, Mike, because also you know, people always want to look at visible measures of success, right? And we're trying to provide housing for folks instead of them living in encampments, which aren't necessarily particularly safe. Uh, we don't know half the time what's going on there. And um if, you know, we bought one of these hotels or two and get seventy, eighty people in these and then a year down the road, there's still all these folks in encampments, you know, it wouldn't visibly look like, you know, success to people. So that's why we're thinking, you know, what are all those cascading comprehensive pieces, you know, to making this work? So um I appreciate that, Mike, that you also be willing to give us some help with that. Councilwoman Reddick?
Um, is there potential for a a partnership with Abundant Grace that provides workforce, you know, development?
Absolutely. Uh, we we would be very um uh looking to engage with with the nonprofits here on the coast, many of whom we we interact with in other efforts. So yes, definitely.
And um what is the expected demographic of the residents? Will there be families? Will there be single people? What what do you anticipate in terms of uh the need?
Yeah, excellent que- excellent question. Uh, the need that we're addressing in this initiative is for single individuals, uh, so not families. Families we would be working with and with other, in that set of solutions. So this would definitely be for single individuals. And right now, in the hotel population, uh, you know, again, it's going to change over time. We move out of the pandemic, but right now we're probably serving a, an older population uh because of the vulnerabilities that I described earlier.
Thank you.
And then uh, one more question, we're moving on to to public comment and then we'll bring it back. But uh, it kind of goes to what Bob was asking about. So, you know, what let's just call one of these properties already, from my opinion, humble. Um, does not already look that attractive from the outside. Uh, it, you know, is there an ability to uh, you know, it, I I would almost say add to the character of the town from that perspective as we purchase something uh and spruce that up? Uh, as we, as we are going through the process, is there, is there anything like that that could be done?
Well, I would say that I'll certainly be a strong advocate for that, uh, as will the, our partner agency. Uh, you know, this is um somewhat new in terms of the county purchasing, stepping in to purchase existing buildings. But our standards are very high. So we would be uh doing an assessment. Uh, first of all, you have to do an assessment of the bones of the building, the plumbing system, the electrical system, the roof. We have to be realistic about uh where out. So we would, we would do an assessment of the building and get uh the dollars that we need to stabilize the building if it needed that. And in terms of the aesthetics, uh, which are very important to a neighborhood, we would certainly be looking at addressing it.
Okay, good. Councilwoman Reddick, yeah?
I just want to pile on there. I think the the mayor asked a good question. Um, so and I think it's an important question, not just because of potential impacts to the surrounding neighborhood. But, you know, I I think it's very important to the people who live there. You know, it's a way to communicate care and dignity. And, you know, no one should have to live in terrible conditions, you know, with plumbing failures and electrical failures. So I I think upkeep is very important for the residents who live there. And and I, that was, that's why it would be important to me that we, you know, take care of the kind of facility that we're, you know, placing residents into.
Absolutely, the dignity, the dignity factor there is very, very important, as well as just safety.
All right, very good. I think uh, I think it's time to move to public comment on this topic and then we can bring it back to council for deliberations. Jessica, will you kindly do the honors?
Uh, yes, first we have Jimmy Benjamin. Jimmy? You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Uh, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, council members, Supervisor Horsey, and members of the county staff. Um, thanks for the chance to speak with you about this tonight. The fact that this is uh being framed in some ways as a short-term problem to address COVID, but also layered with a long-term problem of homelessness, really complicates uh a number of aspects of the challenge that you're looking at. My understanding is that we have between forty and sixty homeless people on a long-term basis in our population. So if we're providing a hundred and four homes, um, even if there was no rotation, we would be importing people into Half Moon Bay. Uh, and it concerns me that we're doing that. I appreciate that the homeless problem is substantial. And I'm glad that there's movement to address uh residents in, for example, Pacifica. I want to be sure that we, that the math works so that we're achieving quantitatively what you're describing qualitatively. I'm also concerned about the whole product. These people do need a roof over their head, but they also need open space, transportation, social services. And uh, in the short term, I can see how we might be able to fund that. In the long term, we're going to have to move beyond the generalizations and the good intentions and have a really clear, firm lockdown of how these things are going to get paid for. Or it's going to go the way of a lot of big city um affordable housing that generally did not serve those large cities very well. As a planning commissioner, and I'm speaking as an individual, not as a member of the commission, I understand that this doesn't need to conform with our zoning ordinance right now, probably the local coastal priority issues. For example, uh, the, the replacement of coastal access, uh, visitor-serving facilities with residential facilities. Maybe that's not a big deal right now. But at some point, I would imagine that cities would want to assert their ability to control their land use. And it would be helpful to understand what the sunset, if any, of these provisions are. And when that happens, how we would bring these projects into conformance with our existing zoning ordinance and our local coastal program. We also didn't anticipate these kinds of developments when we produced our general plan. And it would clearly have ramifications for the ability to have open space and other services. Make sure we have the right amount of water and sewer. Those are, and and frankly, we just haven't thought about it. So there are a lot of ramifications that I'd like the chance to work with you in far more than the three minutes that I have to address you right now. But I appreciate the fact that uh our ability to uh work on this with you is limited. You kind of, you kind of have the gavel and you can do what you're going to do. So I appreciate that you're willing to talk with us at all, and I hope we have a chance to talk more before this thing goes down. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Uh, next we have Beverly Garrity. Beverly, you have three minutes?
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Beverly Garrity. I am uh the Chair of the Coastal Design Review. But today I'm speaking as a member of the public. I too am interested in uh whether or not there needs to be a zoning conversion for this property. If it will uh remain partially a hotel categorical service or hotel plus residential. Um, just to clarify, uh, the quality in has fifty-four rooms, the coast side in has fifty-two rooms. Uh, another question I have is um I think you answered it already. Uh, you mentioned you would eventually want these individuals to go into permanent housing. Where would this permanent housing be? Would it be the same location uh as this becomes a portable housing? Or will these people then be asked to leave the coast side and go over the hill? When, as we know, that's not necessarily their preference. Um. Another question I have are, do you know how long um these uh people typically stay in these kinds of hotels, the length of stay? I know there's been respect for the various uh intermittent uh temporary housing situations. From my knowledge of these temporary housing situations, they can be quite lengthy um before these people are able to get into their permanent housing or actually refuse to leave uh or go back out on the streets. Um, so how long is the typical length of stay? Uh, another question I have is, will you be doing health screenings? Uh, members of the homeless population um quite frequently show up with meningitis, hepatitis, and other highly contagious conditions. Um, I'd like to know how extensive the health screenings would be and not just on a crisis basis, but um as as a, as a standard. Um. Uh, okay, you answered um uh the fiscal impact questions that could be answered, you know. CARES provides for capital acquisition, other sources from federal and states, you would respond to the wraparound services um or restoration issues where the homeless were uh residing. Uh, let's see, do I have any other questions? Um, actually, uh, county council and others were asking a number of the ones I had highlighted, so maybe. No, I think that's it. Um, the other thing is um I uh know for certain that the home, homeless population is here. It's around us. Uh, they're living with us right now. And how magnificent it would be to be able to um care and support this population. I was a little surprised that you didn't log as many vehicular homeless uh in the Half Moon Bay area as I have actually witnessed. Um, and only mention the Pacifica uh vehicular homeless population. I understand you're going to be doing another count. Uh, I urge you to look at the uh parking lots in our strip, the parking in our strip malls uh at two AM and um count those. So thank you. Thank you for this magnificent opportunity. And um, I hope I can hear maybe some discussion or answers to some of these questions.
Thanks, Beverly. And that that actually brings up a good point. Do you, do you all want to, uh, are you taking notes? Or do you want to, uh, because I think it's good for all of us to hear some answers to some of those questions. Do you want to go through all the public and then kind of address some of it? Or do you want to do it case by case and take a minute afterwards? What would you all prefer? You're muted. You might be unmute. And usually what I like to do, just in terms of my preference, is to go through the entire public comment, have you taken notes, and then talk afterwards, but.
I, that would be, that would be my preference.
Good, let's do that. Let's do that. So Beverly, just hang on there and you will get some of those answers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, next we have Brent Turner. Brent, you have three minutes?
Hello, uh, Jessica, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Uh, thanks to the uh city council members and the uh Supervisor Horsey County staff. My name is Brent Turner. I've been involved with some homeless issues, specifically SF Homeless Connect, which started off years ago in the city. And they've been, for the past few years, peripherally involved with this issue. And also I tried to be a part of the uh citizen COVID response uh folks that were formed on the coast side here to uh talk about some of these issues. We, I think, want to just generally applaud this moment and and thank you for paying attention to the homeless issue. Obviously, we don't want to be NIMBYs and and say we don't want it in our backyard. Um, unfortunately, I think there are some geographic delineations to be made between the two properties. I don't know if they're exactly the same in your assessment. Uh, but the one that is uh north of Frenchman's Creek, uh, no, north of the town um seems to suffer from some um transportation issues and access issues that perhaps the one closer to the center of town uh doesn't suffer from. So I think those should be analyzed separately. Um, that was one thing I had to add. I did want to associate myself with the comments of Mr. Benjamin and and the other uh comment uh that that just occurred, uh, because I thought that those were quite well stated. The um city, I think, should be included in the RFP uh conversation and vetting some of the nonprofits. Um, there is a trust issue that's occurring, I think, not only in our county, but everywhere surrounding nonprofits and sort of the handoff that occurs from the county government to these nonprofits. So if, you know, some of the folks uh like Mr. Cole would be promising to stay on and to oversee this uh with some continuity, I think that would be preferable rather than just the day where everybody is on to the next and we might be left with a nonprofit situation that is not uh perfectly on top of of some of these concerns. That brings up the police funding issue, which I think uh we we, there might be some sensibility about that. How we prioritize who's going to be available to these rooms, which I think that the locals first and foremost. But, you know, uh, hard to think that maybe a woman with a child wouldn't be uh available for consideration. So that that came to mind. And then finally, the the exit strategy. Is this ongoing or might there be a potential for a resale of these properties at some point? And at that point, assuming that we could get our our wraparound services in place and get people functional uh to to a level where they transition out. At that point, uh, could the city perhaps be a partner on the resale? I don't know. These are just questions off the top of my head, but it seems like everybody's on top of this. And again, I I want to applaud you for your efforts toward the homeless population. Thank you.
Thanks, Brett.
Thanks, Brett. And next we have Crystal Lynn G. Crystal, and you have three.
Thank you very much. Um, if this project was to move forward, um, I just have a couple of comments. Um, it did make me a little bit sad to hear that there won't be um families. Um, a lot of the homeless that are in, or from my understanding, and I am not uh an expert. Um, but a lot of the homeless that are living in RVs and and in their cars um are mothers and daughters and fathers and children. Um, and so we definitely would not, I don't think, want to leave them out. Um, because I do feel like it would be hard to fill a hundred and six rooms of just single individuals. Um, the second thing I would like to note is um just in the small interim, in that we are in COVID, it does seem like this would be a fantastic opportunity to help our um farmworker community with their COVID uh crisis right now in being able to self-isolate. Uh, it's my understanding that a lot of the farmworkers have the same feeling that a lot of the homeless do in not wanting to be uh quarantined or sent over the hill. So while the program gets up and running, if it's possible to house our farmworkers during this short-term sensitive, or hopefully short-term, um, sensitive time, I think would go a long way to help our community uh for the better. And then um, if we're going to call this transitional housing, it would be really wonderful if there was a way to help families that are experiencing a loss of their home to give them a safe harbor while they find their new home. So if they're being evicted, considering we're about to potentially become um, going through an eviction crisis. Um, if there was a safe place that a family, a family could go for two or three months while they find a new home, I think would also be a really wonderful thing. Um, so those were just my comments. Thank you for everything everybody is doing and see you guys around.
Very good. Thank you.
Next we have Collette Eisen. Collette, you have three minutes?
Okay. Hi, thanks. Uh, hello, everybody. Um, I'm, I was glad to see that uh our city council members had clarifying questions, except for one, the one that represents my district, who thinks this is brilliant and has absolutely not a single question on a, on a project that could have a huge impact on Half Moon Bay. I I'm actually quite horrified. Um, uh, this is, it sounds to me that this would be good for the county, but not for Half Moon Bay. The county is obviously looking for opportunities. They've got money to spend. And they need to spend it quickly. They've got this opportunity to do this. And they want to be able to essentially move a bunch of homeless people into our community. Because we all know that probably half, uh, at least half probably of our homeless community doesn't want to be in a shelter, doesn't want to live under certain rules and regulations. And they're probably not going to opt in. And so you're talking about bringing people from Burlingame and God knows where else to fill up a hundred and six rooms and bring in this whole population of homeless people. So that we have more panhandlers on the street, we have people pushing carts on the street. Uh, you have meals coming in. I mean, the the trash, when you think of three meals a day in boxes and 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 other, other containers. I mean, I hate the whole thought of it. But anyway, um, I just see this as a big problem for Half Moon Bay. Uh, these properties are on Highway One. They couldn't be more visible. There's nothing to hide them or nothing to, you know, uh, camouflage them or anything. They're right out there. They're right out there. These are just rooms. It's not like people have washing machines in their rooms, kitchens in their rooms. This, this, it's just a room. And as we know, they are not, this thing of it takes a while, it takes forever. There's only a few people, a few individuals now and again that get helped to transition to actual work and housing. Most of them tend to be chronically homeless. And so I think we're asking for a lot of problems. The devil's in the details. And the detail so far that I'm hearing, sounds to me like we're just really looking to increase our homeless population. And I don't think this is good for Half Moon Bay. It's one thing to deal with our homeless people, but that's not what this is about. And that's the problem. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joaquin Jimenez.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Joaquin Jimenez and I'm a member of the Latino Vice Street Council in Half Moon Bay. In behalf of the Latino Vice Street Council, I wanna let you know that we strongly support this, this program. We've been asking for something for several months. As you know, we have, we meet every week with city staff and, and county staff and talk about a location where some of our community members could get a quarantine or actually move in during this time of the year. This is a perfect location where we can bring a wraparound services, mental health, addiction treatment, healthcare, you know, for the homeless and, and the farmworkers. This is something we've been asking for, for a long time. As you know, we don't have 50 homeless people in Half Moon Bay. Actually, we have more than that. You know, we have, we're gonna need more, more rooms than 106 rooms in Half Moon Bay to be able to, to house our homeless population. This is a service that has been needed for, for some time. So it's, for us, it's perfect timing. You know, for us that we see our community, that change our community, that needs our community, it's, it's something that I guess there is, somebody is listening. You know, I guess somebody is watching the needs. And it's not about bringing homeless population from anywhere else. We have it here, we have it in Half Moon Bay. You know, when we do that count every year, you know, not everybody feels comfortable to come themselves as a homeless person. And that I know. I know more than, than 50 people that are homeless. Some of them do, they do need services. Some of them do have, you know, mental health problems. But we have that, you know, we can offer that. You know, we have BHRS right across the highway, you know, right here by the, by the substation. We have other organizations, other groups like El Centro, the Latino Commission, you know, that are ready to help, you know, people with addiction problems. We have other, you know, we have our, our program with, from the county, the HCHFH, you know, healthcare for the homeless and for the farmworkers. It's a perfect place. Right now, we have families in Half Moon Bay that have to stay at home to quarantine during COVID. They don't feel comfortable going over the hill to Redwood City, San Carlos, Amatell. You know, this is a perfect place. We have been talking about getting ready for six months of services. And I've been saying, no, it's not six months, looking to at least a year. You know, something maybe even as far, as long as, you know, five years. So with the purchase of these two hotels, you know, the city of Half Moon Bay, you know, we, we are telling everybody else that we care about our homeless population. We care about the community need. And it's a perfect location to provide services. No, so as a Latino Vice Street Council member, we do support this, this program, this project, and we're looking forward to working with our homeless population. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin.
And next, we have Ed Love. Ed, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. While I was waiting my turn, I heard Paulette Eisen make some comments. And I think that's a very narrow point of view. I mean, homelessness is a problem, not just in Half Moon Bay, not just in San Mateo County, but the state and, you know, the nation in general. So if a few people come over the hill and take part in the great program, it's more than a program, it's a project, that Supervisor Horstley and County Manager Gladley and Ken Cole have proposed, I think that's a wonderful idea. And the other thing I'd like to say, I was going to suggest that Eric DeBode and Abundant Grace be very seriously considered until Councilmember Ruddick stole my, my thunder from me. So please do that. Eric has had lots of experience with these people. He knows them and they'll be a great assets to the whole program, the whole program. So thank you very much for doing that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ed. And I, I do think it's good to hear from all the different perspectives, so good to keep cordial. Michael.
Mike, go ahead.
This is Mike Ferreira. I guess that's what you're calling. The, good evening, council members, staff and guests. When I first read about this, I had an awful lot of questions. And I'm glad you had this meeting because a lot of them have been answered. And there was a lot of good input from the audience, I thought. Crystal and Guy, in particular, spoke well to some of the issues that she saw. And the, the unit downtown looks like something that's quite, quite convenient to services, et cetera, et cetera, relatively safe. I, the one in the northern part of town, I think, would have to have some care regarding logistics. Because it is, you know, it's at the northern end of town, which is highly problematic on weekends. So, and the people will need services on weekends. So it's gonna have to be thought out differently in how to service them, I think. But I think you should move forward with this and good discussion tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
And next, we have Merrill Nagawan. Merrill, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, my name is Merrill. My question is, how do you plan to reconcile the correlation between homelessness, drug addiction and mental illness? If the rooms are supposed to be drug-free, are you gonna deal with drug use, mental health instability? And if it's like an opt-in program, there are plenty of people who are gonna choose to stay out on the streets. You know, California as a whole already struggles to get their homeless population into treatments. You know, you can live on the streets. You're not gonna get in trouble for doing drugs, you're not gonna get in trouble for petty theft. So how are we gonna incentivize people to use the services available to them? When, you know, in plenty of places, they already don't use the services that are available? Some places are considering, you know, mandatory rehab and, and mental health treatment for people looking for services like this. So with all that done, you know, how do we intend to reconcile all the issues facing the homeless population outside of offering them just a roof over their head? Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Merrill. All right, it looks like we are finished with public comment. Do you see anybody else, Jessica, that I'm missing?
No, I have no more raised hands.
All right, let's bring it back to council then and let's discuss. Councilwoman Ruddick, go for it. All right, I, or should we start off with the question? I'm so sorry, should we start off?
You should have responses to the question.
Yeah, yeah, response.
Well, I, I'd be happy to wait in first on some responses and then my illustrious colleagues can, can join me. Just scanning quickly through my notes. The planning commission issues or zoning issues, that is not my area of expertise. So maybe I'm gonna need to punt that right away to, to Mike or the supervisor. If there's anything that you would want to say on that issue of, of zoning.
I would just say, as a county entity, we're exempt from city zoning, much like a city would be if they built on, on their property. The coastal commission is something that we would certainly work with on this project.
And I think also, in, in the future, if there's a desire to try to convert either of the buildings to permanent housing, I would assume that we would probably engage on, on zoning questions at that point.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. Typically, on those type of projects, we always work with the cities to make sure that reports with, with their thoughts and hopes are for, for the land also. And we really work in collaboration.
And then I'm looking at the, the question of, of typical stay. I think that's, and it's an excellent question. And it's one that's in a bit of flux at this point in time because of, of COVID, because of the need to provide vulnerable populations with a place to shelter in place. So I think typical lengths of stay at the moment are probably longer than what you would, you would see in the future. But I can tell you that in, in the hotel program that we've been doing since the pandemic started, we have probably had about 50% turnover in those rooms. So again, it's not, there's a tendency to think of homelessness as a really static population, but there's actually quite a bit of movement. And now some of those people left the area. Some of those people did not follow the rules and exited the, exited the hotel program. But typical length of stay in transitional housing, if you engage with someone, they have a clear interest in bettering their circumstances. I would say a typical length of stay could be 12 months, eight to 12 months. A lot of it, of course, as you know, hinges on, on the availability of, of housing that they can afford, which is often becomes the most difficult part. But our county is very committed to creating opportunities for housing formerly homeless as well. Health screening came up, definitely, we would, anytime we engage with someone coming out of homelessness, health is, is a very, very large issue. We would be very diligent in health screening and following up with any type of health conditions that a person might have. The point was made about vehicular homeless. I think the, the homeless count that I referred to in 2019, the point in time count, I'm not absolutely sure about the figures I gave in terms of distinguishing on the street versus vehiculately housed. We can get you those statistics from 2019. But we definitely seek to count vehicles. If we see a camper, we see a, a vehicle with fogged up windows early in the morning, we're going to count that as someone as occupied. Let's see. The question of single versus family came up. That's always a difficult challenge. In, in emergency shelter, you typically don't house single, single people with families. You tend to, to, their service needs are different and, and the security issues around them may be different. And, and I think we can take a look at that in the creation of the, these particular locations and programs. But I would think we're going to tend towards continuing with the single population and then case working with families as they come up here on the coast. And we do have a pretty good track record of, of getting short-term housing for families and getting families into more permanent circumstances. The issue of farmworkers came up. We definitely can look at the, the needs of the farmworking population and this, this opportunity, you know, perhaps we can get creative on that side. There was a comment made about the, the meals and the amount of trash that might be generated at, with our meal service. You know, again, because of COVID and the need to keep people separate, we've gone towards these individual meal versus congregate meals. You know, in the future, we probably could go back to some congregate meals versus individual boxed. But realistically, on, on anything to do with the garbage or recycling, we're very sensitive to the issue. And we'd be looking to, to minimize waste and recycle wherever we can. The comment was made that the devil is in the details. I cannot help but say absolutely. And I do not at all, I mean, I know that we're talking in pretty broad strokes tonight, but the devil is in the details and we will be willing to engage in those details as this comes more into focus. Let's see, what else? The comment about potential quarantine, you know, we're currently, we're really separating our initiative to vulnerable populations with our need for, for quarantine or isolation. Again, we, because of the special needs of people on the coast, we could potentially look at that again in terms of maybe one of the buildings having a few units that were for isolation. But we have to be obviously very careful about how we do COVID isolation versus housing the homeless otherwise. Abundant Grace was mentioned, Eric, Eric was mentioned. I know Eric can think very highly of abundant grace and we certainly will be looking to work with all of the fine organizations out here on the, on the coast side. I, I share the concern about sort of the northern location being more isolated. And I think in programming that location versus the other one, we'd have to spend more time on how, how we would operationalize that and deal with it. The, the constellation of homelessness, mental health and drug abuse, I think, was, was, was well spoken. One of the great frustrations in our society and the emergency room doctors often are quoted as saying that there are homeless dying with their rights on. Because we afford the individual in our society a huge amount of individual freedom. And when you get people on the street who are sometimes caught up in decades of self-abuse through drugs or alcohol, we don't have a magic wand, we don't have a legal remedy to force them into treatment. So we are left with primarily the process of engagement and creativity in working with the individual and leading them to treatment opportunities. I, I personally, I hope that will change in the future, but that is where we are right now. I don't know if other, other members of the, of the panel here heard other questions they want to respond to or if the board, council members feel like I skipped anything, I'd be happy to return to anything you heard.
I'll start off with council, with Vice Mayor Brownstone. You might be on mute, Robert.
Sorry, thanks, Adam. You know, Ken, I was wondering, I wanted a little more clarification because we're talking about a number of different populations. So just wanted to be clear. You mentioned, it's that respite population that I was really curious and how much, whatever we end up with, you know, what, how many folks, it sounds like there's potentially a lot of need. I was really trying to get a better sense of their profile. How many folks? It sounds like there's potentially a lot of need. I was really trying to get a better sense of their profile person, like it's someone you said who is, let's say, coming out of a hospital, not going into a nursing home wouldn't be appropriate, but they need some sort of convalescence. And I don't know if they're ambulatory or not. And it's felt like they might have very different needs. And and I wasn't sure where where they go after respite, you know, how that works. Are the people with family who would visit more? You know, I just kind of get some general profile typical. There's a typical profile that you meant by that population.
Sure, and I I would say again that there's a tendency when you have a new opportunity, you'll see the phenomena of people wanting to solve a lot of different problems with this new resource. So I think I will be very diligent in my work as the agency director of human services to try to get this focused and responsive, you know, in a focused way. Because you can't solve every problem with just one or two new resources. Because we're we're always having to think as a system. We did mention that a common occurrence in the in the kind of quasi homeless arena are people who have gone into the hospital, gotten treatment and but have lost their housing, either didn't have housing before or lost their housing while they were dealing with their health problems and recuperating. And so the hospital system frequently has people who are not in need of skilled nursing but need some check in, some assistance with their care and and a location to do that while they figure their housing problems out again. So it's usually, respite care is typically pretty low level medical. The health system here in our county for low income is very, very strong. It would be typically a visiting nurse or a practitioner who could come assist someone with whatever their medical need was. It would, again, be more recuperative and not any kind of heavy lift on the medical side. So it might be someone, I'll just try to give an example, someone who, you know, had a serious car accident and is past the rehabilitation rehabilitation stage, but still is not fully ambulatory, needs some assistance with daily care. And as they continue to heal, or they're recovering from an infection that has takes some time to heal and they might need assistance with, you know, changing a dressing or something on their on their on the portion of their body where they're still recovering from an infection. So it it runs the gamut, but it's very much on the on the lighter side. But the reason it's important in homelessness is you 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 hate to see someone come in to a medical setting and then get, you know, seventy five, eighty percent down the road and then lose ground and end up back in the hospital or or worse. So.
I appreciate that. Excellent clarification detail. Thanks a lot.
Councilmember Roddick.
Hi. I want to give a brief history of what I've been involved in with homeless issues on the coast. For about ten years, we've tried to get some sort of shelter program, transient housing, temporary housing, anything. We worked, tried to get to churches, as Don Horsley said, to have a rotating program. We had a plan for a inclement weather tent city that was pretty well thought out by Eric de Bodie. All of these things came to naught and it was very frustrating. I visited some of the shelter system over the hill in Redwood City. The transient housing, the the step up from that, and then finally the permanent supportive housing that was built and was totally impressed. If we can get anything like that on the coast, it will be helping lots and lots of people. It was well run. I have a lot of faith in in the people at the HSA who do that sort of thing. The the reason that we kept being told that we won't don't have anything on the coast is because all these services are available over the hill. And they are, to some extent anyway. But the the problem is that our homeless population thinks of the coast side as their home. That's why they don't want to move. I'm not saying that nobody would move over the hill, but it's very few people. They they like it here. This is their home. So I'm a firm believer, from what I've heard and read, that housing first is the way to help more people than any other procedure. And and by giving housing to people who have been living in the creek and especially in a cold winter, I think it it really can help them so that they can take advantage of the services. We've heard a lot of what I would think is nitpicks about why this isn't a good idea. It's gonna ruin the neighborhood. Think about the poor people who are living in the creek. You know, if we can give them a chance to get out of that situation, I think it's worth it. And so I'm a firm believer that this is the way to go. I have a couple of comments that have been brought up before. Since we're talking about hotel rooms, I don't see why families can't live in in a hotel room. There there are some families that are homeless on the coast. And it makes sense to me that they be treated the same as single people. So I would encourage the county to consider housing families as well as single people. And I just want to put in another plug for Eric de Bodie and abundant grace. They're the ones who know more about the situation for the homeless people on the coast. They've already done programs to get them jobs. And housing first is the way to go. So I really support this program very, very strongly. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Anyone else? Councilwoman Penrose? You might be on mute, Councilwoman Penrose.
I'm sorry, I I've been thinking about the fact that we're talking about two hotels and about the lack of services available for the northernmost of the hotels. I'm wondering if if we're talking about respite care, if we might separate the two populations and use the northerly hotel as respite care and possibly as temporary quarantining from people that are affected by COVID and keep the second downtown motel restricted to the homeless population. And my thinking on that is the services are different for both populations. Respite care requires a certain kind of service that homeless people do not. Homeless people require case management, many more services. So it would seem to me an easy, easy way to look at it would be to divide the two populations. Just a thought.
Does the funding mechanism work that way? Just out of curiosity?
Well, the the exciting thing to me about this situation is that we're we're not constricted in the design of this by very much by the funding. So other than the speed, and unfortunately, I just want to say to the public, this is not the way that we typically do our engagement with the with the communities. This has been on a, you know, a quarantine and I mean, on a on a pandemic based rapid fire situation. And so we're we're definitely apologies on that regard. But so so the funding sources would not determine who we housed. I think some of these great suggestions are things that that we would want to engage with you further. And there was the comment made about the county handing off and then sort of leaving it to the provider. That's not our situation here. These are going to be very visible. I mean, that's not the way I feel like we do business in general, but I understand the criticism. But I will be there. I will make sure that we engage with the community, we get the right provider. We fine tune this to the needs of the coast side. So the concern that this is gonna bring in a lot of people from other parts of the county, I don't think so. The needs on the coast side are are many. And some of the speakers, some of the public speakers attested to that. I know the need is there in our community. It's a matter of fine tuning how we use this resource to the needs to best serve the coast side.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject one reminder. And I couldn't tell it, this is this is a little fuzzy when you're talking about one site versus the other. But I did just want to remind if the the council, if you do want to focus on some of the specifics of one particular site, I would suggest doing them one by one so that, you know, the respective council members can have an opportunity to recuse themselves.
Yeah, yeah, and you can help us guide on that. My thought was, once we got to a a further element on that, we would try to do more separation. But if we need to do it beforehand, just let me know as we're going through.
Should I recuse? At this point, should I recuse myself?
No.
Okay.
Unless you want to talk about the coast side in in particular, you should, you know, feel free to stay on. But then I'll I'll make sure to raise my hand if if the conversation goes that direction.
Okay.
Councilwoman Roddick?
I I think we should be having separate conversations for each site.
Yes, right now?
Start right now.
Got, well, I I think there's still some public input, or at least I have a couple more things and maybe I'll go with it. So what recourse do we have if, for whatever reason, something just isn't working out? Just, I mean, just just so I can understand, when we're getting into something of this magnitude, what recourse do we have?
Mayor, this is something we typically do with any city that we're engaged in. The first thing we do is sit down and bring all the parties to the table and really try to understand what isn't working out and then how we correct it. And typically, in the past, we've worked with cities to put in the resources necessary to correct the problem. We want a good situation for certainly in the city, but also for the residents in these various hotel rooms. And we want to make sure everyone's safe, not only the community, but the the people who are experiencing homelessness. And we want to make sure that it works for the city also. So you do have my commitment that if that does arise and we'll do this through quarterly meetings or whatever the city council would like us to do, come back and report on. We're happy to do that on an ongoing basis.
Okay, okay. And then in terms of public input, and then we can get further in, you know, and and I think, let me see if I can get your name, Ken, you talked to this real quick. You know, this is, this is not ideal for any of us in terms of public input. Like, it's actually as unideal as possible. And it's a huge project with tremendous implications for the city in in a lot of different realms. And I'm wondering how open people are to, you know, personally, I do not personally want to vote on this tonight. We absolutely can, if that's what we have to do. But I would love to have another meeting in like a week and would bring it back in and make sure we've reached out to the public again before we move forward with such a thing. What what are your general thoughts on something like that?
Well, my general thoughts are, this is is not, is definitely not ideal for you all. It's not ideal for for me or or the provider that will walk into this. And I think you just have to have to acknowledge this and then redouble your effort to engage with the public. And, you know, if I was starting from scratch, I would not only be working with the city, I'd be out with my provider, doorbelling the the neighborhood and and really engaging on the ground with merchants, with residents. So I I I don't think you can, you can, you can't really, I can't really imagine doing too much public engagement at this point. So I think if you want to schedule another meeting, I'll be there. So and as we work with the city on the selection of of the nonprofit operator, there'll be a a few further waves of of refinement and engagement with the with the neighbors. I mean, with the city as well.
Okay. Good, good answers. And, you know, I I would personally, and I realize that, you know, council can make their own decision, advocate for yet another meeting within a week's time. Because I I just don't feel like we heard from five, seven people from the public maximum. And I I believe that many more people will want to weigh in on this from public comment if we can get the information out. I mean, information just came out the other day.
Sure.
That that's my perspective on it. I I feel like we we do not want to move too quickly on a topic of this great importance.
Adam, can I add one thing?
Please.
I I like that idea of another meeting, what I would like to see happen in between.
Yes.
If possible, you know, Ken, Don, Mike, you have a lot more experience with this. If you wouldn't mind, if you could put together, you know, a FAQ list from what you've heard tonight.
Smart.
Plus, there's so many members of the public who didn't participate. You also know the kind of FAQ, you could anticipate the FAQs that weren't asked tonight better than we could. And that would really help educate the public and, you know, allay some of the, you know, most frequent common concerns that you know of. And then I think would make for a more fruitful conversation when we return.
Yeah, I think we need to bring the public along with what I would perceive to be council's direction at this point and make sure that we've got, you know, consensus in the community.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea on the FAQ and my staff and I will work on that based on these conversations and our own awareness of of people's concerns. I do think we were sort of pulled in two different directions. One is that this is happening fast and people are trying to catch up with the thinking. And then the other side is slow down in your thinking and and include me in your decision making. So we're we're kind of, we're kind of pulled. This is moving fast, but I want to make sure that we take as much time as we can with with the community and and hear what their read is and incorporate as much as we can.
Okay, good. Yeah, very good. And with that, do you guys want to, how would you like to proceed at this point? Anyone?
I'd like to have a discussion of the two different sites.
Let's do it.
In which case, either Harvey or I will recuse. So which one are you going to speak to first? And then we'll know who's recusing first.
Okay, so Jessica, can you help me out here? Which 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 site is the first one of those two attachments? Or can I just pick one?
Pick one. Yeah, I say just pick one.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So let's do, and I'm not sure which one's which entirely by by name, but the one next to three Trace Amigos or in that, in that. Thank you, Coastside Inn. Thank you so much. Coastside Inn, so Harvey would recuse himself on this one. And let's talk Coastside Inn. So Coastside Inn, more central of the two locations, close to both of our our schools, Hatch and Cunha, but also close to all the services and Eric de Bod's current helping center. So and services that are there. So it's upside from my perspective and also, you know, I I am, I, you know, and I hate to say it out loud, but I always get slightly nervous with the whole school thing with all the people walking back and forth from schools and those locations and very vulnerable community there. So, you know, that's that's, what kind of, what comments do you guys have on that one? Go ahead, Councilwoman Penrose.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that directly because Yeah, I'd like to respond to that directly because I think that is an issue that may come up from the public. We're talking about people that live in Half Moon Bay right now. And they live near the schools and they live near Eric DeBode's place. We're not talking about bringing in a new group of people. All we're talking about is housing the people that are here. There has been no issue with the people that are here so far, any consequence. Some panhandling, big deal. So I don't see that as an issue. I think that's an issue that that someone who is more fearful with no good reason of the unknown will get over as quickly as they got over the idea of Eric DeBode starting a workforce center. That has created zero problems. And it's directly across the street from school, right next to the church, right next to Quick and Easy, whatever that gas station's name is. It's not an issue. It's a non-issue.
I I agree. And of course, there hasn't been school this year, so there's no way to quantify that in any way, shape or form. But I agree that there's been no issue. But there's also been no ability for there to be an issue. Go ahead, Councilwoman Riddick.
First of all, you know, I I think it's wrong to stigmatize the homeless, you know. It's wrong to, you know, to stigmatize mental illness to begin with. But, you know, not all homeless are sex offenders or drunkards or drug addicts. And in fact, our economy is going to be producing more and more homeless people. People are going to be evicted. You're losing the job. The economy is transitioning to something else, you know. I think we need to get beyond that piece. And in fact, people who reside here, I think as a population, are going to be safer than transients coming through our community on Highway ninety-two and one, you know, in a tourist capacity, right? You come in here, you do your dirty work and you leave. And, you know, I mean, people are going to run into people at the grocery store, you know, the drugstore. You can't protect people, you know, from everything. So this site is visible. People will be living here. People have been living here who are likely to continue living here in these facilities. There's going to be wraparound services. They are going to be engaging the clinic and probably abundant Grace for jobs. So they're going to be engaged in the community. And I I think that this idea that we can protect people by somehow pushing other people into the darkness, that that's going to be a better situation and more protective. I I just don't buy that. This is a good location for it. It's close to services. It's in an area that's well lit. It's visible. It's well trafficked. I gotta believe by and large, it's safer and, you know, more effective in terms of connecting people to to services. So I don't have any, you know, trouble with that location. It's, it's basically walled off from the neighborhood behind it, right? It's near commercial facilities that are are well lit and have security. So I I don't have a problem with that location if we are going to go for it. If we're just talking about the location itself, I think it's suitable for the purpose.
Yeah, no, I think in some ways it's a great location. I just, I have my fears as well, but go ahead. Council, Councilmember Brownstone, Vice Mayor?
Oh, I wasn't raising my hand yet. I was gonna let others go first, but.
Well, it's just, it's just the four of us.
That's right. Sorry, forgot about that. Yeah, it does seem like an ideal location in terms of almost everything is walking distance. Yeah, that I could think of, right? Healthcare, Safeway Shopping Center. I don't know what the laundry facilities are like at the motel, you know, how many, if any, or how many washing machines. But very close to the new laundromat, Safeway Shopping Center. And maybe that can be added, I'm not sure. I'm just thinking of like almost every need. Plus, we'll have all the food there, but if people wanted food and they can walk to health services. I think the location to Abundant Grace is almost, I mean, that's just a no brainer of how incredible that is. I mean, Eric and his staff, first of all, he has other services already housed there, right? Some of the services we've already talked about. And his staff knows these folks already. I mean, working, I mean, it doesn't really get better than that in terms of a homeless solution, that you already got an expert with staff who knows this community. And, you know, knows when, you know, if there's an individual who might need that extra help. And he'll probably know about it ahead of, you know, the health workers. So having that resource hand in hand is actually really quite unique. And, you know, we have a homeless situation. The bottom line, it's on our watch, you know. You know, as a community, whether or not we take care of our own or not. So here's this opportunity. And, you know, it's not, we don't know if it's foolproof, you know. It's, I feel like it's worth checking out. I was almost gonna say it's worth, you know, taking a risk, but I feel like there's so many other support services around here to moderate those risks. And I think we could really stand out as a community and give it a shot.
Yeah, no, it's good. I'm I'm highly assured by the, by the, by what I've heard from Mike, Ken and Don about what they're going to do to make sure that this is a success. And I think it's imperative that we hold them to it. Because I I do think, I, you know, back to what you're saying, Robert, I I think it's, it's a great thing to be done. But there is some inherent risk involved in it, no matter what you're gonna say and how everybody's gonna deal with it. I think it's a great thing. I think it's a great thing from a humanitarian perspective as well. And what the most important piece for me to find it successful would be actually to see people that, again, back to, we know where the homeless encampments are in Half Moon Bay. If they continue to exist after this is organized, I will not consider this to be a, something that I think is, you know, I would almost call it a failure at that point. If we can get people to actually move from their encampments into the housing and then through the programs and with Eric DeBode and all that stuff, then, I mean, great success. My my fear would be, I I, you know, and I'll, I'll, I'll find out and we'll learn that people just do not want to move out of their current locations. And and maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, you know, we've, we've tried to do this before and people didn't want to move out of the coast. And maybe it was just because they don't want to move ten miles away to be able to have housing and showers and food and all that stuff. But I always find that, I always found that surprising and I I don't know if they're gonna move, you know, closer just because it's on the coast side. And so we'll see, you know, that would be my fear. And so I really want to make sure we're canvassing the area to make sure that that we're, you know, taking care of the the blighted areas that exist in our town to make sure that we're, we're yielding the success that we want from this program. Councilwoman Riddick.
So I like the points you made there at the end, Mr. Mayor. So what's gonna be important for me if we go forward is community involvement. And I would like it to start by having at least the city manager involved with developing the scope of work for the RFQ. I think the, right from the beginning, we need some level of involvement to make sure that the, the product that we're advertising and that we're, we're seeking, you know, addresses our concerns and meets our needs. And then I think it's gonna be really important for some ongoing community oversight. And I don't mean policing so much as, you know, a group of people who are actually monitoring and following what's going on, that can recommend adaptations that increase the potential for success. I think the more the community is engaged, like they are increasingly with Abundant Grace, the more they care about the results and the better the outcome is going to be, right? If you own it, it's gonna be nicer, you know. You typically will keep your nest cleaner, you know, if you live in it, rather than leasing it to somebody else, like an absentee landlord. So I'd like an ongoing role for the community and I think it would be good for the project. And I think it would be good for the community to have that role and to to grow with that role. I think that if we can engage local businesses, that's good. I think if we could partner with local nonprofits, I think that's great. You know, that said, I want to make sure that the, the entity that manages this facility has the capacity, the full capacity to do so and has a record of success. So it might not be a local entity that actually manages it, but you want local nonprofits engaged with, you know, in performing supportive roles. That's gonna be really important. So having a local engagement, any way we can build that in, in a positive way, I think it's going to increase the chances of success and minimize adverse impacts. Just my two cents.
No, it's good. That's good input. Yeah, one of my wishes, if we could have had this beforehand, and I I think it's too late to go about this, but Eric probably knows this information, would actually be to canvas the homeless in Half Moon Bay currently. And if we could have brought it to the meeting, I know that's too much to actually pull off right now, of how many people would be interested. And if you guys would have come to this meeting and said, we guarantee that of your homeless, you know, seventy-five percent are one hundred percent ready to move in, if this were to happen, that would be very valuable input for me personally. I don't know if we can pull that off in time in order to do that type of canvassing and get that information up. But I would, I would kind of want to know how much commitment there is. And I don't think that's that hard to gather that information per se, but it might be. But that's kind of where my head's at.
You know, I, you know, just, just one other comment that I wanted to remind folks, at least what I heard earlier from Ken Cole. The priority population for these hotels are older folks who, older population who, you know, really need a safe place, vulnerable, I think he used the word vulnerable. So I don't imagine that, you know, you, they would be placing people who like to prey on homeless folks in these sites. Do you know what I mean? It's, it's a very specific population, a subset, I think, of homeless who most need that protection. And so it's just something to keep in mind, you know, people say the word homeless, people have all kinds of images in their minds. And I think Ken was pretty specific about who gets priority, you know, in these, in these places. So just want to remind folks of that.
So, yeah, in in the idea, I'd still love to come back and do a second meeting in a week, special meeting, get it out to the public, get all the information out there. One of the things, and I I think the FAQs is a great thing. And then I'd be really curious to know, and I don't know if we have that information yet, but I haven't seen it personally, is is just the rules and regulations that the homeless are going to have to abide by, I guess, in order to come into these accommodations and provide that information as well. And in the, I I don't know if we can pull this off in a week's time, but if we can go out and canvas with those rules and regulations, ask the homeless people of Half Moon Bay, bring it back in a week's time and present that in the next meeting. I think that would be very positive input. Again, I I I am trying to figure out how to best make sure that the community is involved in this process. Because, again, I I I really do think this is a, this is a big deal for a community of this size and location. I think it's a great thing to be done, but I really want to make sure that we've done the correct outreach before we have the look of throwing this down people's throats. I would like to bring the community with us on this.
Just a quick comment that, Mr. Mayor, that if, I I I know you'd like to get another meeting quickly. I I certainly get that, ensure that, you know, in a week's time. However, some of the things you'd like to have happen before that meeting probably would take more time. So maybe you're gonna need to balance that between how soon you have the second meeting versus getting the information. I can tell you, we can start with the rules and regulations that we currently use in the hotel program right now. That's, that's a starting place. It's not an end all and be all, but it certainly gives you the flavor for for how they're managed. And I like the idea of canvassing. I don't know about the timing of that. I can certainly contact Abundant Grace and Eric and discuss how that, how quickly that might be done.
And you have the next meeting, I believe. Did you say the eighth?
December eighth is the next.
December eighth. So, so, so realistically, if we, if we actually put this on the agenda for our next city council meeting, that would still be okay with you guys, which is our, which is.
Mayor, I was gonna suggest on the calendar and on the logistics, obviously, next weekend is, next week is a short week. So having a special meeting Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, I think would be very challenging. And I'm guessing your council would not want to do that.
No, and it doesn't bring the public that I need.
Then we, then we have a regular meeting on Tuesday, December first, and it's not a heavy agenda at this point. So I think that would be the goal, to put a, put a placeholder on that agenda and we could have an item to be brought back. And in the interim, then, that's one, a little over a week of time. Obviously, the direction to me and staff would be to go work out details, negotiate some of these items with the county team and come back with everything we can, we have at that time. So some of the things we can bring back, as Mr. Cole says, maybe some of the things we won't have ready. But I think that's the best opportunity is to use the December first meeting. And then my understanding is the county is gonna be supervisors are gonna be considering this a week after that on December eighth.
Which would be, which would be, I I don't know if that's enough time for you guys to make that work, but that would work from my perspective. One of the other things I'd ask you to do, Bob, is to absolutely work on our communications out to the public, obviously, between now and then, because that would give us the time we need to make sure that we've broadcasted out to the community, gotten it out through the newspaper, all the different avenues we need to make sure that we've hit. You know, I think that would be a much better way to go. Go ahead, Councilwoman Riddick.
I think we still need to talk about the other location too.
Okay, are you, are you comfortable now switching or do people need to discuss more before we switch? Okay, well, in that case, how do we get Harvey back?
Texting him now.
Okay, cool. And then Robert, yeah, feel free to.
I'll switch off.
Robert, are you still there?
I can hear you.
Oh, good. So after this, I I'll bring you, I want to bring you back so we can finish just overall, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Text you as well, Robert.
Okay.
I think Robert has to mute, right? Oh, there he goes, yeah.
And then we'll wait for Harvey to come back.
Is Robert allowed to listen in?
Harvey's back. It worked.
I'm asking Catherine.
Catherine?
Yes, he is allowed to listen in. It's sort of analogous to if you're standing outside in the hallway of a regular city council meeting. So you could go ahead and listen.
Okay, Harvey, welcome back. And so now we are going to discuss, and for lack of better, I think, what is this, the Quality Inn next to Via Uno? Or in that vicinity? And let's, let's open up, uh, let's open this one up. So, go ahead, Councilwoman Riddick.
I think it's a bad location for it. You know, for, you know, it's completely opposite to the other site in terms of accessibility. You know, for, you know, it's completely opposite to the other site in terms of accessibility to services. You know, people may not have vehicles, the, the public transportation is poor in terms of its regularity, you know? The, the access along the highways is not good. There are, I believe, some trails from the motel through the neighborhood to the beach, which I think raises security concerns for neighbors. I, I, I think in terms of supporting an unsheltered population that needs wraparound services, I, I just don't think that's a good location. I don't think it has the security of the, the other locations down near Kelly Avenue. And I, I think it needs some discussion and potentially serve, you know, a different population with different needs. I just wanna throw that out there for purposes of discussion.
Anything else?
If, if it was only the Coastside Inn that was purchased with the money that could be, would otherwise have been allocated to the Quality Inn, could that be used, for example, to spruce up the Coastside Inn or provide a higher level of wraparound services or something?
Well, the only thing, it has to be used by the end of the year. So I'm not sure we'd be able to put the money in and fix it up that quickly. That's, that's the only limitation we're faced with for the care of funding.
What about my idea of using that location for respite care?
I mean, certainly that location could be used for respite care. I'm not sure we have, I think that's 52 rooms or 54, I can't, I'm getting them mixed up. I'm not sure we have that much need for respite care, but I could ask our health officials about that. I mean, it, it is, there is certainly a need throughout the county. We can maybe get a good idea pretty quickly if that need would be to that extent.
And the other, other way it could be used would be for quarantine, quarantining COVID patients.
Yeah, we, we could do that. I'd have to check and we, we certainly are doing that in hotels and motels right now, so I, I could check on that certainly.
And I would just say, on, on the need for isolation is, the isolation need is definitely there now. However, hopefully with the vaccine sometime a year from now or more, it will, it will no longer be with us. So we still have to think about, if we went that route now, we'd still have to be thinking about how to use this beyond that point.
Very good. I, I'm, I'm with the, you know, in terms of for the homeless population, I, I agree with Councilwoman Ruddock on this one. I, I don't find this to be, although I like the location in some respects, it's away from the schools. It's kind of in its own area. But in terms of walkability, feasibility, closeness to Eric DeBohds, Holstein, you know, walkability, it, it doesn't really make much sense. I don't know how people would be able to shop and go out and, you know, now we're talking the laundry and all the different aspects right there on Highway 1 in a highly trafficked area right there. And not that the other spots not traffic's crazy as well, but I think it's less desirable from that perspective. From Councilwoman Ruddock's, Penrose's perspective, I think it could be used as, as, for other means, you know, for short term. Again, we, and back to what Joaquin was saying, we do have a, a very high Latinx population in Half Moon Bay. Some of them are congregated in smaller houses. And so, you know, as COVID spreads, sometimes it spreads amongst the entire house unless we can get some people out to, to different locations. And we're probably, I think, you probably hit it on the nose, Ken, we're probably a year out from that. But what we do after a year with that property is hard to then say and all the different moving parts associated with that. So I'm open to suggestions on that one. I, I, I personally don't wanna overextend what I would consider Half Moon Bay as a whole to have two properties kind of going through a major transition all at the same time. I'm not sure if we'll be able to coordinate that all, all that well with all those moving parts. So I, I'd prefer sticking with just one property. But again, I'm open to whatever council wants to do. That's just kinda my perspective, yeah. Councilwoman Penrose.
In terms of what you do with the property after everybody's safely vaccinated and COVID has gone away, we have the Silver Wave, which we can consider. The Silver Wave is gonna need housing. And it could be hospice housing, which we do not have here on the coast. It could be long-term care housing, which we do not have here on the coast. I don't think we're gonna have a problem finding a decent use for it.
If I may add, that if I'm not mistaken, Mike could maybe clarify this for, for me as well. This was probably the site that we thought in the long, was really probably best for, for, for housing, for redevelopment of housing. And you also asked about respite care. I, I've served our committee with the hospital constitution. There's an estimate, there needs to be given by about 18 beds for respite care.
Yeah, that's, that's right Supervisor Horsey, we did look at this property for the future for redevelopment. But, you know, the council member brings up a, an interesting point that I was thinking of also, and that may be the need for senior housing on the coast. Could we utilize this location where there's some conference room space that would be more of a recreation space and gathering space and potentially a, an area for meal service to the, to the seniors? So might, might be something we look at and, and interesting to look at.
Yeah, and Catherine, you're not gonna like me for this, but I'm gonna do it anyways. Back to the other property real quick, as it transitions, you know, that might be a great spot for teacher housing eventually as well, considering its proximity to both schools as we, you know, the multiple levels of affordable housing that we need here in Half Moon Bay.
There's another thing that we don't have on the coast side, and that's assisted living facilities.
So we got, we got lots of options, good. Anything else that needs to be discussed here? Is there anything else that Mike, Ken, or Don do you want addressed?
Just, just thank you for your time tonight and allowing us to present these ideas to all of you.
No, I think it's been, I think it's been, I think it's great, I think it's great discussion. And it's, you know, these are opportunities that, I think somebody said that at the start. You know, these, these are opportunities that present themselves during times of crisis. So we're happy to be brought into the fold and considered for it. I wanna bring Councilman, Vice Mayor Brownstone back in, if you don't mind. And I think we can.
And if I could, while we're waiting for the councilman to come back, you know, I just, it, it's really Supervisor Horsey that's really asked us to, to really think outside the box here and bring resources to the coast. He realizes that, you know, it's, it's difficult for many, like you said, Mayor, for many people to go over the hill. We've got a lot of resources on that side of the hill, but Supervisor Horsey's always asked us, don't forget about the coast and to, to really think about the needs out there. So that's really where this came about. And, you know, I certainly applaud the supervisor for his efforts here.
Well done. Well done, well done. So again, I, I propose, I, I think, or, or, Bob, do you wanna summarize kinda where we are at this point? How to, what, what's gonna, the next steps?
Sure, I'll, I'll give it a try and then, you know, someone from the county can as well. So we all took notes. We heard comments from the council, the public deliberation, we heard everything as staff. And so this is moving very quickly. And so we obviously as staff are gonna move quick and spend some time on this over the short week next week. And we'll work with the county and meet as necessary to review our notes, answer the questions, work out the details on the two sites, the conversation you all just had about what the pros and cons of each site and the differences between the two sites and some of the other issues that came up. And then I heard direction to have an item ready to go on our December 1st agenda. At that time, depending on how much, how much work we've done, we bring back answers to some of the questions and some of the finer points here that were made that we didn't fully flesh out tonight. As you said, Mayor, we have another week to get the word out to the public. So you can take another round of public comment at that point. We would probably ask the county team or at least some subset of the team to come back to that meeting. But we, you know, we may also have a lot of this stuff worked out by then. And then, and then that would be really the last opportunity. Obviously, the county can, can speak up here on where they're at. They're, they have to do due diligence, from what I understand. They're, they're moving along on the normal path that you would follow to, to do an acquisition. But acquisitions, you know, there's always things they have to work on. So when they go to their supervisors on the 8th, I assume they are hoping for success and that they're ready to recommend a purchase agreement at that point. That's what they're working towards. And then even then, there's due diligence during escrow and they gotta work through that. So we would then follow along as partners as they went through that process. So that's kinda how I see it. But I, I did hear pretty strongly that the community and the council wants an opportunity on December 1st to, to roll this around again.
Perfect.
Okay.
I think that's, that summarizes everything. Well, Dawn, Mike, Ken, thank you again so much for attending, for bringing these great ideas to us, for allowing us this opportunity. Council, great deliberations this evening and staff, obviously, very well prepared. And Catherine, thank you for keeping us separated on the issues as best as we possibly could. Thank you for attending the special city council meeting. Have a great night, great, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll see you all in December.
Good. Thank you. Okay, I will.